Now call this July tenth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the Centerville Town Council to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
The Chief of the Flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, in the visible with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you. Alright, first up, council is agenda review. Are there any changes to the agenda? I think we, I think the appearance we have on our agenda is rather gonna be just an update from the town clerk. Just so we know, she was unable to make it. If nothing else, we will move on to the minutes. The minutes from the June twenty sixth meeting are in your packet. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the June fifth council meeting minutes.
There a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Alright. Now we will go into citizens forum. Are there any citizens that wish to address the council? Okay. Did you wanna do this update for Mary Margaret now?
Yeah, and it's very brief. She just wanted me, she was unable to attend. She just wants to let you guys know about the event, that is August twenty seventh, at the Courthouse Square, six P M. This event is to honor Samuel Turbot Wright. He began his career as a public official, which lasted the rest of his life, and he was appointed to the registers of wills for Queen Anne's County. He was also the Maryland Executive Council, who served alongside the governor. He was the first town council president of Centerville. He was also appointed to the clerk of the Queen Anne's County Court. And he was also the appointed lieutenant colonel commanding the thirty eighth regiment of the Maryland militia, which earned him lots of political influence in his career. His farm is now Northbrook. And for the event on the twenty seventh, they are gonna have several speakers, including the register of wills, Laura Cook, the clerk of the court, Catherine Hager, council president, Ashley Kaiser.
It's not gonna be me.
Not gonna be you?
It's gonna be council member Sandy Huffer.
Sandy Huffer, okay.
She can't make it.
Alright, Sandy Huffer. The adjunct general, Janine Burkhead, and then someone from the community of Northbrook, as well as the author of Washington's Immortals, the book, Washington's Immortals, Patrick O'Donnell. So, they're gonna donate an oversized bronze plaque, that they actually engraved the prison ship where Mr. Wright was imprisoned. And they're gonna have a presentation on the twenty seventh, so we hope people will attend.
Awesome, and thank you for covering that, council member.
Oh yeah, no worries. She called me and talked to me about it.
Yeah, I gave her your cell number.
Okay.
Just, so as far as letting, other than here tonight, how else would be communicated to the community, so they're aware of it?
We'll put it on our Main Street Facebook page. I'll also do an e-blast about the event.
Terrific.
Can we make sure it's on the town calendar too, on the website?
Yep.
I know the calendar is wonky, but...
Right.
Awesome. Okay. Next up, in old business, these are just a couple of second readings, and the the public hearings are set for when?
If they're in August, I don't have the date yet.
Okay.
August tenth.
Tenth.
August tenth, okay, so a month from today. Alright, so the first one is a second reading of ordinance ten dash twenty twenty five. That is the administrative search warrants, legislation we spent a lot of time talking about. Anything we need to discuss on that right now? Okay. And then next up is a second reading of ordinance oh eight twenty twenty five, which is the trailer ordinance, also a second reading with a pending public hearing, and we kinda dispensed with the amendments last time. Anything else on that?
Of course.
Okay, rolling right along. Next up is reports of boards and commissions, Maryland Municipal League.
I'll defer to anybody else who might have a little hangover holdover from attending the fall, the summer conference. No? Okay?
Pretty much. Okay.
I have, when we introduce our intern, who's here with us tonight, we, there was four of us that attended a code enforcement session, and there was the gentleman who is in charge of code enforcement for the city of Salisbury, as well as a gentleman in Rising Sun. They gave a really good presentation, so we did some research, and, cause we're gonna start creating a plan, a communication strategy for code enforcement. So we pulled some stuff off their websites and
Oh, good.
And start doing that.
Excellent, excellent.
You just had more of a strategy in order for compliance, you know, relating to various things.
Right.
Awesome.
That's great.
Okay, council of governments.
No meeting till September.
Right. Economic development, the town clerk prepared letters to go out to the, like, prescribed organizations that need to give us someone. And so that, you said it'll go out tomorrow?
The letters. I have them. Oh, I'm so sorry.
I made the update you were...
I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll do it tomorrow.
Yeah.
Awesome. So that's where things are there, we're working on it. Park advisory board.
Yeah, there's a few things. At our last meeting, Eleanor Hubbard came to our meeting, Wendy Hubbard's daughter, and she, she's a student at Gunston. And as part of a youth climate institute environmental project, students from Gunston, they'll be like seven to fifteen, will be pulling the invasive grape vines on the, on the mill stream trail this Friday. So hopefully, you know, they'll have decent weather to do that. It's gonna be hot, but from four to six. And the, and the school's involved with it, and just as far as just managing. So that's great, so additional hands as far as, cause that's really invasive, which just kills trees all over Maryland, and so, that's wonderful. The wharf planter box, you know, materials have been chosen from the local master gardeners. Again, Wendy Hubbard was kind of the liaison facilitating that. And due to the weather, he determined, let's not plant those. It was beautiful, beautiful native plants that were chosen, and that we planted probably in September, once we get through this heat wave, so that will be done, and as far as just, again, an improvement along the, the trail on Front Street. There were some trees that were noticed, that were cut, it was actually from me, I was walking on the trail, I'll admit that. It was like, at Windsor Street, there were like four trees that were cut down right near the trail, which is within the critical area.
Is that why we're working on the, the tree thing?
No, that's, no, they'll, yeah, we're working on that.
Yeah, so, so I just kind of made Carolyn aware of it and others, to say, you know, what can we do? Did they do an application, etc.? So Carolyn and Cliff are looking into that, as far as notifying whoever took those trees down. Cause it's really important, especially during, in our critical area, for trees not to be taken down. And I agree, cause there was another matter that came up amongst us, as far as just communication, education to the community, which I highly agree with. It should be, whether it's an email blast, or what, is it just kind of like the pickup of yardwaist, you know, that yard waste, what it is, just reiterating what it is that people can do, how they need to do it to comply. Pointing them to the code where it is, so they know where it is, on our website, and then as it relates to trees, that everybody in the town, if you wanna take a tree down on your property, you have to do an application for the town. And people don't know that, and you just need to do that really recurrently every year. It shouldn't be just like one and done. People, people knew, these were new people, that were residents. And, and another thing that was talked about at the P A B meeting was certify arborists and people who actually do this work. Cause if you had gotten someone in town, which we, Carolyn was actually at her meeting, so she can, she can vouch for this. They should know, you know, what are the regulations within, especially the critical area. Anybody who is a really, you know, that, they should, they should know that. And the town should kinda speak to, and I, I went to other websites for other towns, and they commonly do that. So people kinda have some resources relating to that. So there's some recommendations I think we can do, that Carolyn and I have been having some discussion, but again, she was at the meeting, that we can follow up on in education, so hopefully we can do that over the next month.
We did, you can, yeah.
We, Nathan, our intern, that you will meet later, we had him work on a project to write a letter to all the local arborists in the surrounding community, explaining our rules and procedures, and why you need a permit. And we emailed to those that could, and we mailed to those that didn't have an email address, and we had some responses. You know, thank you so much for telling us about the town, I have your permit. We also attached the permit
Right.
with the letter, and also online. We told him where it was online, and we put it in the email blast too. So we sent out about thirty or so letters already, so they're to the local arborists and landscaping companies in the area, our rules and regulations.
Yeah, right. So again, a recurring type thing, just, again, for education, you know.
Pardon my ignorance, but if a tree comes down involuntarily, as some have in the storm,
Yes.
do you need a permit to clean it up?
We do ask that you still complete the permit. The permit does not cost anything, and that's pretty much on purpose, cause we don't, we just want people, and it's really, a lot of it is to track our canopy as well, so if we know that there's trees that are down, like, we did have some that came down at the Episcopal Church, I believe, at the bottom of Commerce, after last week's storm, and we had them fill out the form and, and all that, so, and it's just, so we know.
Tracking.
And, yeah, and they are required to replant as well, as part of this form, so.
Yeah, so again, we wanna continue to grow our canopy. It's really important, you know, relating to a variety of reasons. So we wanna maintain that, so, and be responsible. The, I think the last thing is relating to, actually a program that I did some research on, relating to the Shore Rivers. And it's called a program which is Tree the Shore, Tree the Shore. And it is a grant that Shore Rivers has, that I think they wanna plant like fifteen hundred trees or so. And it ends, it's a grant that ends in twenty twenty seven. And towns are able to apply and get free trees. And Shore Rivers will plant these trees, so, which is great. The main commitment from the town is to water the trees, to make certain that they survive, and the probability of them surviving is, is, you know, on the, on the high end. So I actually know the person who administers the program, and talked with her, and I also reached out to Chester Town. They, they use this program. They wanna plant thirty trees a year. And so they, they're very complimentary of the program. And also, there's been other towns that have taken advantage of this program, Ridgely, Denton, or some other towns. Yeah, Preston, Easton, Cambridge, Denton, they've all kinda utilized this, cause it's a great opportunity, that you're not having to pay for the plant material and the trees in your town.
And they plant them? Do you?
Yes.
That's awesome.
So they plant them. So how it works is, there's an application that's done, where you wanna plant them. They look to see where they're gonna be planted, so again, they're gonna be viable, and it makes sense to where they are. They should be kind of in the public area, you know, so shading and all that, as it relates for the public and their enjoyment. And, and then there's a species of trees that are on their website, that you choose from, because they have the ability to buy these trees. So it's something that I spoke about at the committee meeting, and they were very, you know, they said, why wouldn't we do this?
Do they have spots that they would wanna do them?
They don't know, they don't have it, yeah, so I just introduced it.
Could it solve our street tree, missing street tree issue, or does it need to be at parks?
My, as far as there's like seven or eight trees that were taken down, like, within town, that...
Right, that the tree wells are just empty.
Right, that have been talked about. And so I think those are, those should be done. And then the committee should look at to see where else should they be, cause again, it's the committee to say, what, you know, where they, where should they be planted?
So, does it have to be the government, or can a private property owner do this too?
Yeah, private property, I think private property owner can do it as well, I believe.
I wonder if on the street trees that are on private property, if we should make them aware of the opportunity to get a free tree for their tree well? And then focus our efforts on parks, maybe? I don't know, just if, you know, more is more. Tree canopy wise?
Right, no, I think as far as just the ones that were taken down in town, which have been, you know, there's, they're there on Commerce Street, and there's some just kind of around, and kind of in the center of town.
But they're each attributed to a private property, right?
Not all of them.
But a lot of them, cause that's why we had written that thing last year, to make sure they understood this, we were gonna get them a tree, but it's their tree.
Yeah, I think there's certainly a significant portion of town where it's on private property.
Yeah, so there were some from that perspective. So we can, cause I'd gone around with KIP, probably two months ago, to kind of show where these were. And to make certain there wasn't anything associated with the, you know, to, the road that comes through town, the state, just kinda, what are the logistics here? What can we do? So we do it right. So I think, so I think from that perspective, they could be used for that perspective. And then, again, what the committee comes up with, where they think they could be. But I think we could easily do thirty trees, easily. So I think in the next thirty days, we should, you know, the committee should come together and figure out where those trees are, and be presented to town council to move forward with.
I like it.
So that was just from that perspective.
Is the council okay if we apply for the grant?
Yep, yes.
Just making sure.
Yeah. Yeah, the, I mean, the only hesitation I would have is that, if we're talking about, like, the property, we've talked about a couple times now, the little parking lot, like, I don't wanna spend a ton of energy, grant energy or otherwise, on that. I think it's a larger conversation. But otherwise, I don't really care. You know, not in a negative way, but just wherever the tree board
Right.
thinks these trees should go, it's good with me.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Yeah, do we have consensus that the parks board can kinda, or the tree board can kinda make the decision, and then they can, town staff can apply for the grant?
Yeah, yeah, it was discussed at the committee meeting, and there was just, there was, everybody was agreeing
Yeah.
with it, so, just to move forward.
Yep, we'll do that.
Again, let's figure out when we're, you know, planting the trees, so we can do the application, the committee, and
Yeah.
make forward with it. But yeah, I was just, you know, Chester Town was very complimentary of it, so.
Awesome.
I think there's the key things. I've taken up quite a bit of time relating to the P A B.
Okay, it's only seven sixteen.
I don't know, we got Dan now.
Oh, here we go.
I'll speak slowly.
At the last Planning Commission work session, they completed the draft of the T N D ordinance language. And they, it should be available to vote on at their next meeting, which is the sixteenth, next Wednesday, right? Yes. Also next week, there's a resumé of the amended G T I site plan to include more details about the renovated barn, and also a final site plan for Draper Brothers. And that, that's all?
You sure?
Yeah. Did I miss something? It was a lo, it was a long work session, it is.
Stunned, stunned into silence. Alright, great. Reports of department heads, town manager.
I just have a couple of things. The communication plan with our consultant should be arriving next week. It was supposed to be this week, she had a death in her family, kinda pushed her back a little bit, so. We also received a letter from, this is regarding the Mill property. We received a letter from the building inspector, so the town council, we sent a letter to the property owner, giving them sixty days to renovate, vacate. It has not been completed yet, so I received the report today, which is required by our code from the building inspector, saying it has not been renovated, or vacated, or demolished. So the property was posted today with information about that, and Sharon's gonna talk a little bit about the next steps for the council.
So yeah, so the July ninth was the deadline to complete the work, and that has come and passed. So as Carolyn mentioned, the next step was for the building inspector to transmit something to the council. And then the next step is for you all to have a hearing on whether or not it's a dangerous building.
And does the property owner have to attend that hearing, or we just have to give him up our two eighty to attend?
Yes.
Do we have that set?
We can, we can, if the council wants to do it at their August tenth meeting, we can do that.
Yeah, we gotta keep moving.
Seventh?
August seventh.
Sorry.
Seventh.
Oh, it's the seventh.
Seventh, I'm sorry.
I am not here that night.
Sorry.
I am not here that night.
Do you want another day, then? It would be a separate meeting then.
I like to be here, but if you will, could be here, but if you wanna set us...
Wanna do a special meeting for that?
Yeah, let's look at the calendar.
Yeah, let's just don't do it on a Friday afternoon.
Yeah.
People get suspicious when we do that.
For the year. Okay.
Fourteenth or something?
Yeah, so I was just gonna say, what if we did the fourteenth?
I just planned, because we weren't gonna be here. We didn't have a meeting on the fourteenth, so I just, cause...
No, fair, totally fair.
Yeah.
I'm gone the whole next week, so...
Sharon, are you gone the entire week of the fourth?
I leave the sixth. I'm gone from the sixth to the tenth.
Tuesday the fifth?
That's all I was just gonna say, Tuesday the fifth would work for me. No?
It would work. The fourth worked, but not the fifth.
The fifth is actually the, what is National Night Out, first or second Tuesday?
It's the fifth.
It's the fifth, yeah. And you're...
But already be here, it'd be perfect.
I know, we just pop upstairs, have a little quick hearing.
August twelfth.
What is this?
You're going, who's going?
You have your workshop the thirty first. It might make it long.
Yeah, thirty first.
Yeah, what if we, I don't know.
No, we need to get this done.
How much notice do we have to give in for the hearing?
There's no specific notice.
We have to do a public, we have to do an advertisement, I'm sorry to interrupt you.
I think we should do an advertisement. I think we also should make sure, I mean, he's not local, so we need to make sure he gets that notice.
Okay, but that's, he's not not lo, I mean, he doesn't live in town, but he's not.
Right, but he's across the bridge. It's not like someone can hand deliver it and make sure it gets to him.
Oh, someone can drive to...
That, that's true.
I'll drive, I'll drive it. Yeah, I'm over there all the time.
We have done the...
I go over the bridge every day.
Might not pick up certified.
The last letter, he did.
He did?
I think we should have him served personally, because it's a hearing, especially if we're talking about giving less than a month's notice. Which I'm okay with, because, I mean...
Yeah.
Should we think in August?
So for advertising, what, what window of time do you need for advertising that may determine the soonest we could do this?
So we, advertisements go in on the latest on Tuesday, early afternoon for that Friday paper. So we could have something in on Tuesday the fifteenth, that would go in on the eighteenth. And there's not, you said there's not, there's not a requirement to advertise the hearing. We should advertise the hearing, but...
Much notice as we can provide.
Yeah, and I just wanna make sure we've given a reasonable amount of notice.
Week and a half, that's good enough.
So what about, what about Tuesday the twenty ninth? I know that's two meetings in the same week, but...
Tuesday?
It's twenty ninth of July.
Yeah.
That work for you?
Mm-hmm.
Alright, so let's do that, Tuesday the twenty ninth of July.
Time, a timeline will fit between now and then to have that happen?
Yeah, that gives him over two weeks' notice. They'll have it in the paper on the eighteenth. That lets it run in two papers before we have the hearing.
Okay.
And let's, just, I mean, how much is a process server to have somebody take that letter?
Not that much.
Yeah. Let's just do that. Seven o'clock?
Seven o'clock on the twenty ninth.
Yep, it'll be a really fun week for all of us.
We can put it in the eighteenth paper and the twenty fifth.
Yeah.
So.
Perfect.
Okay. And here, here, if it's available.
Yeah, we'll double check. Something tells me it is, because Peggy and just checked date, no, that was August dates, never mind, sorry.
Well, you guys like the, what, the fifth Tuesday?
That's the fifth Tuesday.
Yeah, there way anybody have a meeting?
I don't think the...
Either here or Vincent if we can.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll check that. Okay.
And ultimately, it requires an ordinance and findings of fact. So if you give me enough detail, I could have it ready, so you could act on it on the seventh. It'd be hard to have it ready that night and anticipate all the evidence that might come in, but
Yeah.
But we could have it.
Okay. Um, okay. But why don't, yeah. We'll get something. Okay, great. Anything else, town manager?
Oh, just a couple more things. I wanted to report that Karen just completed her Certified Public Manager course with the University of Baltimore.
Awesome.
So she graduates next Wednesday. I'm gonna go to the graduation. I'm invited as an alumni. But she did say, she's like, I'm only allowed to bring one person, and my husband wants to come. I said, I am invited. I don't have to go with you. So, so yeah, so that's next Wednesday, the sixteenth, she'll be, and then, that's about, that's it.
Okay. Awesome. Police?
Good evening, council. Lieutenant Charles Harris, on behalf of Chief Hobbs in the Police Department. We're just gonna discuss June's department overview. You also have a copy in your packets. I'm just gonna briefly go through it for everybody. So during the month of June, our officers made a total of five arrests. We have one on view, four criminal summons, warrant services. Traffic enforcement shows that we had approximately one hundred ninety-one motor vehicle warnings, twenty-nine non-arrestable citations, eighteen safety equipment repair orders, eight commercial vehicle inspections. And our red speed camera enforcement did issue a combined thirty-four speed limit violation citations. During the month of June, our officers responded to approximately seven hundred calls for service. These are examples. We had approximately three assaults domestics, one malicious destruction of property, nine K nine scans, sixteen assist other agencies, four nine one one hangups, fifteen check the welfare, six thefts, two frauds, seven traffic accidents, and approximately two hundred and eighty business and residential patrol checks. In the special assignments, you'll see that the defense tactic instructor training, Lieutenant Laramore, is a defensive... Lieutenant Larry Moore, is a defensive and tactics instructor. He responds down to the academy at the Eastern Shore Criminal Justice Academy to assist with their recruits in, in their firearm instruction range. This is for our annual qualifications for all our officers in the department. Canar, we had two events there in June. We, they had an officer appreciation day where officers went out there and interacted with the students. And also, we had an interaction with their field day and students and K-9 cache as well. Meters training, and then the FBI law enforcement executive development training. That was a supervisor leadership course that we sent Sergeant Foster to, um, to develop his supervisor leadership and within our department. And I think that's a great course for our supervisors and administrators to attend. That's pretty much it that we have here. Nothing else that's really notable. So that really concludes what I have here today. Do you all have any questions or concerns? Minus Mr. Keel?
I'm good. It's always good when you say there's not much that's notable.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the best as possible.
Yeah.
All right, I'll thank you all for your time. Hank?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, town attorney?
Just real quickly, as Mr. Worth mentioned, the Planning Commission, the TND and PUD amendment draft is now in ordinance form. It's in the Planning Commission packets, but if you want a word version, let me know. I can get that to you. Or actually, Carolyn might have the most recent version. I think you made a few edits after I did.
Yeah, but I emailed it, but I can send it, yeah, yeah.
But anyway, hopefully you all have a chance to look at that. We'll have the workshop on July thirty-first. And the moratorium expires October ninth. So working back, if we're to get this enacted by then, we would need to pass the ordinance on September eighteenth, and basically introduce it then on August seventh. So there's not a huge turnaround, so, um, hopefully on the, at the workshop on the thirty-first, we can go through it and get whatever changes you all wanna make to that, so that we could get it introduced the following week. I just wanted to give you a heads up about that.
Did you say September eighteenth is when it had to be?
Passed, in order to be effective by the moratorium. Even though I think it's highly unlikely that someone would submit knowing it had been passed and not effective yet, I still think it's good if we can get it passed by the moratorium.
All right. Town clerk? The only thing I have is I wanted to introduce the council to our first Centerville, Town of Centerville intern, Nathan Taylor. He's been doing a lot for us in the administration, administration office, and he moves next week to finance and grants, and then he'll do two more weeks after that with Public Works. So he's learning all about the town. He's been a great resource so far. I haven't been able to keep him busy enough.
I know, he's quick.
But he's very talented. Are you attending Towson or Maryland?
Technically, I'm enrolled in Towson, but if I, if your background Maryland, I'll be going.
And he's gonna major in civil engineering, correct?
Architecture or design.
That's right. And he likes planning.
Yes.
Well.
I, I talked to him the first day he came in for his interview. Are you interested in planning?
So he got to attend this town council meeting tonight, and then he will attend the July sixteenth Planning Commission meeting, um, where he'll get a very learning experience. Our meetings are usually more fun, this is why.
The work sessions are more educational, so.
Awesome. And how long? How long is he with us? Um, he's with us till August twelfth.
Great, great.
He's got a lot, lot to learn.
Is this our first intern? Yes, it is. That we, it was approved, and so he's our, our first one. Oh, great. That's so cool. And he's doing a great job so far, so we're really proud to have him.
That's wonderful.
Thank you. Awesome. All right, Citizens Forum. Okay. Council Roundtable, council member, I'm too tired, guys. Councilmember Keel.
I just got a couple of things. Anything about the Acme Parking Lot?
Not yet. I will, actually, I'll call them back. It was, when I talked to them, it wa, it was, um, by the end of the month, is what they said. They had gotten quotes in, so.
About State Highway?
I've not heard anything back from State Highway, no.
And he just followed, sorry, and he just followed up recently with State Highway, right?
Sent a letter. She sent, they sent a letter.
Sent a letter to State Highway, yeah. To, um, the, I sent it to the district engineer as well as, um, I don't know what his title is, but at the Centerville.
Troy.
Troy, at the Centerville office, so.
The piece of property across from Red Zone? That we, we.
State Highway property?
Yeah.
Yes.
What's going on with that?
I'm looking at Sharon too. So, we're still working on the deed, so they sent it to us. Sharon reviewed the changes. There were changes that she originally had asked to be made and questions that she asked. There were some like grantor, grantee flip flops that weren't fixed, so she sent it back to them.
Okay.
I did hear back from, um, the liaison with State Highway, that it is back with Army Corps of Engineer and their attorneys and State Highway attorneys were, are supposed to be getting together. It was, I think I heard from her last week or the week before, and like, within this week or next week, they were supposed to be getting together to talk about it. So we're still waiting on the deed to get completed.
It'll take a while, yep.
How many attorneys does it take to prepare one?
Sharon did it pretty quick, when she looked at it, so, anyway.
Yeah.
It's all like that.
Yeah. Councilmember Beecham?
Nothing.
Okay, councilmember Ward?
Uh, I have nothing more.
Councilmember Harper?
Just once, I mentioned at last, our last meeting, the wastewater treatment plant, and getting an update, and I know you didn't wanna do anything until July, so can we expect something in August? Just wanna know kind of what you were thinking, Carolyn.
Yeah, actually, um, I know Kip's, at the next meeting, he's gonna come to you. We are looking at the design phase, so we've gotta go in and get council's approval on that. Right now, we were hoping, we are hoping by the, we, I'm sorry, we were hoping by the end of June that the PER was gonna be approved. I've not heard that it, or it's not been approved yet, so, um, that's what we were waiting on before we kinda came in. But yeah, we can do, we can do an update.
I mean, it's not if you have the information you're wanting, cause that's the challenge.
Yeah, I'll, I'll check with David, our engineer, and, and Janil and Kip, and just see if there's anything more to report on at this time. But, um, yeah, Kip will definitely be here at the next meeting.
There should be some summary information congealing around the rate study that we agreed to at our last meeting, cause we'll need to convey certain information to that individual, so, um, that might be a good opportunity to pull that up.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm, yeah.
Yeah, I just think it, you know, it'll be August, and we'll be moving towards fall, and, you know, it's a major project, major project for the town. And I just wanted to have it in front of us as far as communicating.
Perfect.
And discussing it.
That's it. All right, I just have a couple of things. One, I went into our local Dollar Tree yesterday, and they tried to give me a plastic bag. And then they were really rude about it also, so I just, as you see businesses just choosing